It's over here. I'm ready to go. All right, so I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole on June 10th, 2021. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Or declaration of any interest?
Yes, Counsel Kivony.
Go ahead, Counsel Kivony.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I would declare a declaration of interest on item 6A, PDR-CW-0821, the addendum to the Hilton Hetz Hites condominium report on the grounds that my husband was involved as a real estate agent with this developer, and the integrity commissioner has advised me to declare on anything connected to any matters he was involved in.
Thank you, Counsel Kivony. Looks like we're having some technical challenges, but Counsel Kivony, thank you for that. Is there any other declaration of interest, pecuniary or otherwise? Excellent, then we'll move on. We're on to item number three, delegations. The first delegation is going to be from BDO, Victoria Watson and Tracy Smith.
Morning.
Hi, good morning. Tracy.
Hi, would you like us to take it away?
Please, yes.
Okay. So I'd like to thank the Council for inviting us here this morning. So I'm Tracy Smith, and Victoria Watson is also on the call. We'd like to thank Mary Lou and Joanna and their team for their assistance during the audit. The audit was performed virtually and poses some additional challenges as we learn new ways to obtain sufficient appropriate audit evidence. Mary Lou and Joanna were very open to new ways to exchange information and very patient as we learned to navigate our new virtual world. So we really appreciate the support they provide, and we do want to recognize the completeness and quality of the working papers that they provide to us during the audit. As your auditor, we have responsibility to communicate with those charged with governance on annual basis. In your documents, some section, about five documents down, there's a report titled 2020 Draft Audit Financial Statements, County of Gray. It's a white report cover, and Victoria has it up there on the screen. We will start with that report, and Vicky will also put... We'll start with that report. The report contains all the communications required under auditing standards. Many of these items are the same as prior year, as the content is prescribed by auditing standards. Therefore, we do need to communicate these every year to you. I will provide a brief summary of the communication, and Vicky will provide a high-level overview of the draft financials in Appendix 1. There is also a blue graphical report in the document section at the top titled 2020 Year End Report, County of Gray. If there is time, Vicky will highlight some key financial indicators from that graphical report. Since we are virtual, we'll take questions at the end of the presentation. So Victoria, on page, page three of the report, there is a summary of the items to be discussed. The status of the audit, the financial statement is our draft and can't be released in final until council approves the financial statements. Once the financial statements are approved, we will need outstanding confirmations, signed management representation letter as of the report date and subsequent event review up until that approval date. Amounts are material. They would affect the decisions of users relying on the financial statements. Materiality was $3,250,000. Performance materiality was just over $2 million, and we use the performance materiality to focus our audit and identify amounts to be tested through statistical sampling. Thresholds of 10% to 20% of the performance materiality, or about $240,000 to $240,000, are then used for standard and analytical procedures. In terms of audit findings, our audit strategy and procedures were outlined in our planning report. There were no changes to our planned procedures, and no issues were identified in our testing form. No additional risks were identified during the audit. Internal control matters, we are required to report to you in writing any significant deficiencies in internal control that we have identified. During the course of our audit, we did not become aware of any significant weaknesses in the design or implementation of internal controls that were tested during the audit. On page four of the summary, there is a sample representation letter included in Appendix B. Unadjusted differences, we are required to disclose to you if we find any amounts during the audit that have not been adjusted. Your management team, they do a very detailed analysis for the year-end, and all adjustments were made with the exception of an error that the management team discovered with the amortization of capital assets. Since changes to the calculation of amortization in the software for an individual asset is difficult and time-consuming, it was decided to adjust in 2021. And since the amount is not material, we can still issue a clean audit opinion that the financial statements are not materially misstated. Independence, we confirm that BDO is independent of the county and can issue an independent audit report. And finally, for auditing standards require us to communicate on an annual basis a discussion on the responsibilities to prevent and detect fraud. We are not aware of any issues, and Vicky and I can be contacted directly if council does have any concerns. That is a summary of the communication. I'm not going into detail with the remaining report. I will now turn it over to Vicky to go through the numbers.
Thank you, Tracy. So I apologize, I'm going to scroll down here a little bit, so hopefully you can just turn aside a little bit while I scroll, if you don't mind. I'm just going through the remainder of that report to get to Appendix A, which is the independent auditor's report. So as part of the package, we do provide, starting, this package is numbered Part 2, but it is page 11 of that individual PDF document that was provided. So when we're looking at the independent auditor's report, there are no significant differences or contact, or content changes in comparison to the prior year. It does include our opinion in the first portion of the independence auditor's report, and it is a clean audit opinion, and that is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. The remainder of the report to you goes through the responsibilities of management and those charged with governance, which is council for the financial statements, and the auditor's responsibilities. We have dated the audit report on page four with June 10th, as it is anticipated that council will accept the, or it is hoped anyways, that council will accept the draft presentation of the financial statements today. I am going to next go to the consolidated statement of financial position, or the balance sheet, as those may be a bit more familiar term for those in business themselves. And this goes through a snapshot in time at December 31st, 2020, of the financial assets liabilities and non-financial assets of the County of Gray. When we look at the financial assets, you will notice that the largest variance in financial assets is the increase in cash and investments. There were additional funds allocated from the bank accounts to investments during the year, as well as investment of funds held in reserve for future purposes. When we look at the liabilities for the corporation, you will note that there has been an increase in amounts for accounts payable. There has been an increase in amounts due to the province for, mostly due to social services programs where funds were not expended and are due back to the province at the end of the year. When we look at deferred revenues, there is more detail on page 27, for those who wish to look at that directly. But the largest changes in the deferred revenue classification relate to developers' charges that were collected and not expended during the year. So these will be amounts that will be utilized into the future. The middle of the page here is the net financial assets. The increase in net financial assets is a positive variance, supporting the ability of the municipality to meet its financial obligations and have ready funds available for the future. When we look at the non-financial assets, there is an increase of over $5 million in the tangible capital assets, showing the investment by the county in the physical infrastructure and assets of the municipality in excess of any recognition of amortization as expense during the year. The overall accumulated surplus did increase by over $16 million, which again is a positive variance, showing the increased investment in the municipality and also the accumulation of surplus for, and reserves, sorry, for future projects that are planned. The next page is the statement of operations and accumulated surplus, and I'm going to highlight a couple items on this page as well. When we look at the revenues in comparison to actuals and budget for the 2020 year, there is a note that the revenues are higher than budget. When we look deeper down into the functional areas, so by department, it is noted that there are several areas where grants were not recognized or grants were not completed due to COVID restrictions during 2020, but there were additional funds received for COVID revenues as well. So that's counterbalancing the grant revenues year over year. When we look at the expenses, the expenses are showing as $11 million greater than what was budgeted. But one of the items that is not shown in the budget at this time is the budget for amortization of the capital assets on an annual basis. The amortization year for the 2020 year end was also approximately $11 million. And we can actually go through that in a little bit more detail when I get to the blue report and show you how, on a departmental basis, the expenses were actually lower than budget when you remove the consideration of amortization. The annual surplus for the year is showing as $16 million, but I would like to point out that this is prior to the purchase of any of the capital assets that were done during the year, any reserve transfers or any debt repayment, which are balance sheet items and are shown separately. I can also go through that difference when we get to the blue report. So that is the high-level overview of a few of the pages of the financial statements. And maybe I will take a moment now before I switch reports to ask if there are any questions at this time.
Sorry, thank you very much for that. And perhaps before we do even that, I should put this item on the floor. So it is moved by Counsel Desai and seconded by Counselor Carlton that the financial statements for the year ending December 31st be received and the treasurer be authorized to approve and sign the financial statements. So that might allow us to have questions and discussion. Before you move into the other part of the report, you wanted to entertain questions now?
Yeah, I thought just before I switched over, that might be appropriate, if that's okay with yourself, Warden.
Madam Clerk?
Counsel Millen and Counsel Desai.
Thank you. Counsel Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, Victoria and Tracy. I note in the, on your, the final page there that you were just going through on, under expenses, long-term care, the actual is some $5 million over budget. And I presume a lot of that was to do with the pandemic. Is there an offsetting increase in funding from the province that balances that over-budget number?
There definitely is an increase in grants during the year. And as I mentioned just previously, that there were other projects for grants that were budgeted that were not undertaken, that were anticipated during the 2020 budget process, and those were replaced with the actuals from the COVID funding as well during the year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Desai.
Thank you, Warden. It's my question as regards to the, the error that was found. And it's not specifically regarding the error, it's more to do with the issue between audits. What is the consequence of the municipality or the county not receiving a clean audit? This is more for my curiosity.
The, the, the county did actually still receive a clean audit. So, so when we give an audit opinion, our audit opinion is if the, if the financial statements are not materially misstated, and the, the unadjusted difference was well below materiality. So, so you do still have a clean opinion that the financial statements are in all material respects in accordance with the, with, with accounting standards.
So, Warden Higgs, if I may, provide some clarity on my question. I do recognize that we have received a clean audit. My question was, what, what would be the consequence if we didn't? It's, it's a hypothetical. I do recognize that we have received a clean audit.
So, so would the consequences be if you didn't get a clean opinion?
Correct.
Um, so I...
I can take it if you want, Tracy.
Okay.
Yeah. It would be my expectation that our auditors would provide a letter back to the treasurer and to myself that outlined what the, their findings were, what the issues were, and that there would be a requirement for Mary Lou and myself to take whatever remedial action was required to adjust that. But that is information that would come back to council, like the, any, any letter from our auditor would be shared that had any findings, and it would be shared with county council. So you were aware both of the issue, but also what action was being taken to address that issue. Is that fair, Tracy?
Yep, for sure.
Thank you so much.
That's it, Counsel Desai?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Next, I have Counsel Potter.
Thank you. Maybe I shouldn't look a gift horse in the mouth, but I just was looking at the social services numbers, and we seem to be $5 million under budget. Now, maybe there's good news in that, but maybe not. I just couldn't make up my mind how to, how to put that in context. So perhaps you could help explain it to me.
So this is going to be one of the areas where the grant funding was not recognized. So there were cash flows during the year in relation to the social services program. And due to things like daycare's not being open at the same capacity during the year and changing the funding types, there were some amounts that were not expended, and therefore the expenditures are going to be lower. And then also the grant recognition is going to be lower for those functional areas as well. So though there are reductions in the expenditures, there are related reductions of normal operating funding through social services that the grants are not being recognized at the same time.
So likely to be just a one-time situation then?
Possibly 2021 as well, depending on how things are going this year. We are just opening up tomorrow after lockdown number three. So in terms of the results for 2021, I can't necessarily say that it's the one-time-only situation, but we will, you'll probably hear some updates from the management team as to how things are going for 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Potter. Madam Clerk, I do not see anyone else's hands?
I don't either.
Okay, so we'll turn it back over to you, Vicky and Tracy. I don't know which one is going to proceed.
That would be me again, sir. Thank you very much. So now we're going to go to the, what we call the blue report, which is a graphical representation of key financial indicators for the County of Gray. So I'm going to scroll down to page three of this report, which shows, there's a brief overview, five-year comparison of the increase in the net financial assets over the last three years, just for your review. But then also, the composition of accumulated surplus is shown in the bottom right-hand side. So that $256 million, which is shown on the main balance sheet of the financial statement, is comprised of the amounts that are invested in your tangible capital assets, amounts that are to be funded in the future for unexpended capital, the amounts that are internally debentured, and also any external liabilities coming to the net investment in capital assets of just over $200 million. Also, part of the accumulated surplus is amounts that are going to be funded in the future as transactions occur for post-employment benefits. A prior commitment to Grey Bruce Health Services was there in the past. We have, there is a continued commitment to Georgian College, and then other surplus amounts. And that comes under $193 million, and then the reserves for future and future projects of $63 million to get to the $256 million, which is shown on your statement of financial position. We have a graphical breakdown of the cash flow changes during the year for your information. And we also include some information on page five of this part of the package, which shows the capital assets by type, which are at net book value, so after amortization has been recognized, in comparison to the historical cost as those assets were purchased in the past. And then the composition in graphical form as well. One of the next areas is going to be that comparison of revenues. This is done on a high-level area overview, so it's not by those departmental areas, which may have answered your questions a bit more succinctly, Counselor Potter. But it is showing that overall, much of the funding for the County of Gray for 2020 was from government transfers, and then the remainder from, the next one is from taxation, the next highest-level. When we go to page seven, this is the section that I alluded to previously, which goes on more of a departmental basis to look at the expenses in comparison to prior year and in comparison to budget. So if we exclude the amortization, which is not part of the taxation budget that is approved by council on an annual basis, the budget was just under $122 million. When we look at the actuals, it was just $121,250,000 is really where the expenditures came out after overall. So there are some areas, as pointed out, in terms of long-term care, the needing for additional staffing and costs to support the residents in those homes. And then you're also going to see paramedic services, again, performing so many different services in the community that as frontline workers is very much appreciated. And other different areas, but overall, the budget, when you look on an operating basis, was actually less than what was originally approved by council. Just to go to the next page, we see this in a bit more of a graphical sense. And in this, in this way, we can see long-term care had the overall, the 27% of overall expenditures, followed by social housing, social services, and paramedic services as the highest areas of expense by functional area. And these are all areas that are supporting the community and supporting the residents of the County of Gray directly. When we look at the expenses by object, so what are the types of costs? 51% of those expenses are the salaries. So those are the people actually providing all those services to the residents of the County of Gray. The last page, the last two pages, or actually three, I guess, so this, sorry, I should clarify, the departmental summary of surplus transfer to reserve, this should be familiar information. This is a report that was provided by management for inclusion in this report, showing the transfers of surplus at the end of the year by functional area. And then the last two pages advise what are the amounts that are held for the future for reserves and reserve funds. So when we look at this page here, what is there for the future in terms of reserves? It shows the increase of just over $11 million in reserves. So the $63 million, the bulk of that is for future capital purposes, setting monies aside now and in coming years for future projects as they come about in accordance with your asset management plans. The next page, or the last page of our report here, is going to be what the funds you have for the future for obligatory reserve funds. So this is where the development charges and the federal gas taxes are held. Again, showing that increase in development charges year over year as amounts are being set aside for those projects that are going to be funded by those DC amounts in the future. A small decrease in the federal gas tax as some projects were able to be completed during the year. So that is our blue report. Again, I would like to echo Tracy's comments about the thanks that we would like to provide all the management of the County of Gray who have contributed to our audit. And also thank you again to council this morning for having Tracy and I here to present.
Thank you very much, Vicky, and thank you, Tracy, as well. I'll turn things over to council now for any questions. Again, I'm not seeing my top row, so I'm assuming Counsel Millen, you've got a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden, and not a question per se, just an observation. It's interesting to note, under the operating expenses by function, the health unit used simply 1% of our entire budget, which is juxtaposed beside the outsized impact, the positive impact that they had on the lives of all of our citizens in Grey Bruce for the last 15 months, or whatever it was, or whatever it has been. I think that demonstrates a very good value, very good investment of our funds there, and I just thought that was rather interesting to note. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Millen. Anyone else?
Mary Lou?
Mary Lou. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would just like to say thank you to Tracy, Vicky, and their team. It's been, like they said, it's a challenging year to audit. We moved everything to an online portal last year. Kevin drove 17 three-inch binders down to their office that were quarantined for three days before they could use them. And as we had things ready this year, everything was uploaded to a portal, so it's worked well, staff embraced it. And I'd also, in addition to Vicky, Tracy, and the team at BDO, just like to thank our team here. It was another challenging year. We were almost finished the working papers in March 2020 when we went into lockdown. This year was a little different, and everybody has worked really well together, and I'm really proud of them. And I'm also, I'd like to say thank you to the departments that we've worked with. It's, it's a challenge, you know, working with people, asking questions, doing things through teams, and everybody's been so cooperative and patient with us, and just thank you to everyone.
Yes, thank you for those words, Mary Lou, and thank you as well to Vicky and Tracy. I think it's time to call the question on the motion. Is there anyone opposed? And seeing none, that is carried. So once again, thank you, Vicky, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Cheers now. Okay, so we now are going to be turning to our delegations. And I wonder if I could just canvas our delegates if they are present. And, and I'm wondering if we would be putting anyone out terribly if we took, say, a 10-minute break. So our delegates here, just speak right up. I'm hopeful that we can take a 10-minute break.
Senator Gray Health Services Foundation?
I'm fine with a break.
Fine with a break.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. We've been sitting for just over an hour, and I like to get us to get up and move around a little bit. So if we can, it's now 10, I'm going to call it 10:40, so if we can come back at 10:50. So 10 minutes before 11:00 sharp, we'll see you all then. Turn off your cameras and your microphones, please. So 10 minutes before 11:00 sharp, we'll see you all then. Turn off your cameras and your microphones, please. All right, so we're about five seconds and counting. Are we going to be going live?
We are continued live and, and recording.
Excellent. Looks like we do have a quorum, so I want to welcome everyone uh, back. We are now on to our delegations. I'm going to be welcoming from Gray Bruce Health Services, Gary Sims. Um, and John Kervik, Kervin Nick. My apologies. Uh, yes, you now have the floor. Please go right ahead. And we do have your uh, presentation as well. And for viewers watching, it is on the website, uh, along with the materials for this meeting.
Thank you, Warden Hicks and members of council for allowing us to meet with you today and present. Um, it's nice to be able to present on this subject to you, uh, given the year we faced. And the year that we're still facing, uh, this is some good news to share and, and we're happy to have the conversation with you. Uh, I'll start out just by saying, uh, what a pleasure it is to be working with the um. Foundation on this project and to be the leader who's been fortunate enough after so many years to bring this to. To a start of the build and to see shovels in the ground and the concrete being poured. Um, in amongst all the other things that have happened this year, this is a bit of a bright star. So. Happy to meet with you all today and I'm going to pass it over to John and John will. Walk you through the slides and then we're happy to answer any questions you might have. John?
Good morning, uh, Warden and uh, council. Uh, happy to present this. So I'll go through the slides uh, pretty quickly. And as Gary said, uh, we'll uh, do the questions afterwards. So starting off with the history, really the slide, all I'd like to say is you can see this has been a. Uh, an over 20-year exercise that uh, the organization and community has gone through to get this hospital. And. As you go through the different timelines, you can see it's taken that long. It's gone through uh, several different um, government uh, iterations and uh. And yet here we are, uh, in 2021, March 1st, uh, construction has started. We're to the next slide.
However, we should say that MP Walker has been, MPP Walker has been with us throughout the journey and we couldn't have done it without him and he's great advocacy, so. Just want to pop that in there, a little bit of advertisement.
So in terms of funding, um, the project, the constructor, the general contractor is Bird Construction. Um, they've got a good history uh, with healthcare and are quite excited. Uh, and are looking at this project as really a capstone for their organization uh, in Ontario. The total project value is coming in around 69 million. Uh, in terms of how the funding works. Uh, of that, of the construction, uh, 90% is covered by government, 10% uh, the community has to uh, raise. But that is only the construction cost. So when you look at the furniture fixtures, all the equipment in this new hospital, 100% of that is coming from the community. And we couldn't do that without our foundation who's going to be speaking to you uh, later on. Uh, and uh, thank you to uh, everyone for your support. Uh, and for Gray County, uh, you gave us the land that we're building this hospital on, so we're uh, so appreciative of that. So the hospital, uh, to the next slide. With the services, it's going to be a 68,000 square foot uh, facility, uh, 24/7 emergency room. Uh, third bullet there, just to highlight, that's a typo. There's actually uh, eight exam and treatment rooms uh, in this hospital and. So that's a much more robust emergency department than what you have in, in the current Markdale Hospital. But rounding that out, we'll have uh, lots of outpatient services. You can see the diagnostic imaging, ambulatory care is. All the clinics that can be uh, offered as well as a lab, um, spiritual uh, space. Uh, and the foundation will also be located there. And they designed the hospital with room on the ground floor. That uh, can be looked at for future opportunities. So we've built it for the future for sure. For the next slide, the foundations have started in April, um, they be, uh, they should be completed by uh, August. As you can see from the site, the excavation is done, the sanitary sewers are in, the roadways are set. Uh, you know, the, the construction's proceeding uh, quite well, um, thus uh, far. We hope to have the, the facility uh, open in 2023 uh, to the public. And as you know, there's a snowmobile trail that we've relocated to the perimeter of the site and we're certainly uh, going to be engaging the users of that trail. Uh, you know, on, on how to make it uh, you know, work well for the future.
And it's an ATV one, apparently. I found out a couple of weeks ago when I did the walk, it's not only snowmobile, it is an ATV group too. So we're working with them as well.
So some photographs of the uh, site and these were taken a couple of weeks ago. To show you different aspects of, uh, so you can see there, uh, they're pouring a lot of concrete. Uh, that seems to be, uh. And it's funny, when I asked for an update a few weeks ago, they actually had to stop for a day because of snow, which was an unusual occurrence when we had that snow day on the Friday. So a little bit about current hospital volumes, about 13,000 uh, visits in the ED. You can see lots of diagnostic imaging and lab procedures. Uh, 84% of our patients come from Gray County uh, into the hospital. We don't see anything other than uh, growth for this area and it's certainly. You know, there's a lot of people migrating from the GTA uh, into Gray County and uh, and so we think this hospital is going to be quite uh, busy. Currently employ 90 staff, uh, two permanent physicians, uh, we have locums that cover the ED. And uh, and all indications are with a new modern facility, with all this ambulatory care space, it's going to really help uh, recruit. Uh, professionals uh, to the area and hopefully uh, in terms of economic development, it's going to uh, you know. Spur additional economic development uh, for the county. In terms of how we communicate what's going on at the site, uh, you can see there's been a number of presentations. Uh, Chamber of Commerce has a TV screen set up. Uh, we'll be sending regular letters to the residents that surround where the construction's going on to keep them updated. Uh, as well, we post information uh, on our website and certainly using Gray Highlands What's Happening newsletter. Uh, to keep all your constituents informed as we go through this process. And that is it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, uh, Gary and John for that update. Very exciting. I was there for the um. The, the announcement by the premier, as, as were you. Uh, council, are there any questions of our delegates?
Oh, that was easy. Nobody has a question. Come on, that's crazy. Too much good news at once just makes everybody stall.
I do see Counselor Mellon stand up.
Oh, there you go.
Just, uh, just one question. I couldn't let you off that easy. Um, I'm just wondering in terms of uh, budgeting and valuing, you know, but uh. For uh, things going forward, uh, what value do you place on that land that the county uh, presented to the uh, project? In terms of dollars?
220, yeah, $220,000.
But what value will that be on the books? Um, surely that property is worth more than that.
Uh, I don't think we value it that way. Most of our properties eventually, because we own them for so long. I mean, I, I think we own. Uh, 12 different properties, uh, other than residential properties which carry those values, uh, even the old hospital which has property of its own. Uh, the value of that is often reassigned to another public entity. For another use rather than sold. If we were a downtown Toronto hospital, I hear what you're saying. Because I would be trying to sell that property at a later date or uh, you know, transition that in some cases into dollars for other things. Uh, even the old hospital, which now sits on quite a large piece of property. We don't carry that with a lot of value. In other words, sorry?
That historical cost.
Yeah, it's kept at historical cost and, and, and really because we don't, as a not-for-profit, we, we, not that we wouldn't or couldn't do those things, you're right. Uh, but we don't normally, we try to, i- in other words, if someone tried to buy the old hospital property. I would look for and am looking for and, and have conversations already started with people that want to reuse it for a not-for-profit. Health purpose and it would be signed over for a dollar as long as it's done and in the right way with the right partner. So. Maybe it's not good business, but it's how hospitals kind of have always worked in rural areas. Unless you want to make a big offer on the old hospital.
Well, I was thinking the uh, the dollar uh, that you're suggesting might be a little expensive or a little pricey for, for legacy site like that. Uh, but uh, nonetheless, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Mellon. I think you're probably, um, there's different values that are used, but I know you're probably referring to the tangible capital asset. Uh, value for depreciation purposes. I don't see you nodding your head.
Well, however you wanted to word it, um, I think that piece of ground is worth far more than 220,000, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Uh, I think Deputy Warden McQueen, have you got your hand up?
And Counselor Desai.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden and, and thanks to our presenters. I should try to take my hand down when I'm done here. Um, I want to thank you, uh, Gary and staff for all that you're doing and continuing the, the vision of, of building that new hospital that was exciting news earlier on this year and when the announcement came. I do also want to thank uh, your group with regards to working with the local snowmobile club and the ATV club. I know they were, I know they uh, they reached out to me and, and I tried to connect them with the, the right person and your staff and I, I really want to thank you for reaching out to the community and, and. Not only all the other great things you're doing and, and, and that, but just even sometimes the small things, uh, you know, like that do mean a lot to a lot of people. So I would just want to thank you for working with those groups.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Uh, Counselor Desai.
Uh, thank you, Warden Hicks. So if, if, uh, if Southgate doesn't, uh, put in a big offer. Uh, could we say that, that we're going to build a hospital in Markdale and make Southgate pay for it? Because I'm, and now I'm looking forward to the offer coming in.
I didn't hear the question.
All right.
Stop, Counselor Desai, you've been drinking.
Anything else, Counselor Desai?
No, I, I just want to thank the, uh, the presenters, uh, and, and I want to thank them for the uh, the ongoing, uh, and very transparent, if I might add, communication that they've uh. That the channels that they've maintained, uh, they, they had presented before Gray Highlands Council as well, uh, uh, very recently. And so I'm, I'm. I know people in the community are very excited to uh, to see the progress. Um, there, there was at one point a number of naysayers. Who said, well, I'll see it when the shovels are in. And, you know, now we're able to look and look over there and say, well, the shovels are in and. You know, there's a lot more than shovels that's going in now. So I'm, I'm very happy to see this progress and I'm very excited for the future for Highlands and Gray County. Thank you.
We are too. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. Madam Clerk, I do not see any other hands, correct?
Correct.
And with that said then, I want to thank uh, uh, Gary and John for that update and that presentation. And I do have a few words. Um, the words start with, I'm pleased to provide this check. I don't know if you can see it there.
That's always good. I can't quite see it.
I'm doing my best man in white here.
Keep it there for one more second. And Mary Margaret's going to take a picture.
Okay, let's see if we can get that.
There we go. She's got it now. She's coming in.
Okay. So I'm pleased to provide this check for, sorry?
One more time, Warden.
Oh, okay.
One more time, I'll get Mayor McQueen above you there. Really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right.
You so much.
So I have a couple of words. Uh, so I'm pleased to provide this check for $780,000. In fulfillment of Gray County's commitment to the Centre Gray Hospital in Markdale. Today's amount combined with the value of the land uh, at 220,000 brings the total contribution to $1 million. These funds have been set aside in reserve fund anticipating this contribution since 2006. I'm delighted to see this project moving forward and the current Centre Gray Hospital serves as an important rural uh, service hub. And this new facility will help them continue to serve our community with modern equipment and room to grow. In February of this year, Ontario Premier Doug Ford and Deputy Premier and Minister of Health Christine Elliott. Announced that the construction of the new hospital in Markdale had been approved and construction officially began in March. The hospital will take approximately two years to build and will cost close to $70 million. Million dollars.
Yeah.
Anyways, thank you folks. Great news. Thank you for that update. Yes, lots of people. Happy with, uh, to see this proceeding. Have a good day.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Warden?
Yeah, yes.
One comment, if I may, before our guests leave. Um, the day of the announcement, we had an, an agenda and through this um, the graciousness of our local MVP. We've had the premier sign it, the health minister sign it. Uh, I think the only one left is your signature, Mr. Warden. And then once that is done at a certain time, I want to be able to present that to the hospital for the archives from the announcement of that day. So just an FYI, when we get together, uh, I need your signature.
Very good, but my signature will cost you a lot of money. It's pretty valuable now.
780,000 dollars.
Very good. Thank you again, Gary and John. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. And uh, next, we have Centre Gray Health Services Foundation. I believe that we have uh, Harvey Fraser. And Bob Pringle. Um, Markdale Hospital donation and campaign update. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
Well, first of all, um, we wish to thank Warden Hicks. And the entire county council for allowing us an opportunity to meet with you to talk about local healthcare. As mentioned, I am Harvey Fraser, Vice Chair of the Centre Gray Health Services Foundation and Chair of the Together in Care Campaign, the new Markdale Hospital. With me, I have Bob Pringle, a member of the Together in Care Campaign. Along with Darlene Lambert, Executive Director of Centre Gray Health Services Foundation. We have a very short and informal presentation for you today and feel free to jump in at any time. So at that, I would ask the administrator to bring up the slide deck.
I think Darlene is going to share her screen.
Okay, are you with us on that, Darlene?
Yep, she's just bringing it up.
Okay. Okay, is that as, the biggest it gets there, Darlene, or can? We expand that a bit. If not, that's fine. Um, if you look, this presentation, first of all, I'm going to say is, is somewhat a little repetitive of what uh, John had presented. But there are points in here that need repeating and uh, there's some information. First of all, this is a, a good picture of uh, artists. Of the new hospital and what it's going to look like. So, and there'll be some other slides from inside of uh, artists or pictures of it also. If you look at the history, very few hospitals have been built. So not only is it rare, it is quite remarkable that after fighting for 20 years, this community has finally succeeded. Our hospital finally broke ground in March 2021 and expected to take approximately 18 months to build. After another six months to move in. So doors open in two, approximately two years or sometime in mid 2023. Uh, next slide, please. The new facility will be much more inviting for. The new facility will be much more inviting for pa- for patients, visitors and staff to work in. The building is far more efficient with larger spaces and better allocation of resources. It will modernize every aspect of the care that is presently provided in current facility. Plus it expands the ambulatory capabilities, which is key for a small community. This is important because many routine procedures that were once inpatient procedures are now done through ambulatory care. We are very proud of the fact that the ambulatory care space. Is the second largest in all six hospitals in the Gray Bruce Health Services Corporation. Second only to Own Sound Hospital. Over the past several years, Markdale Hospital has lost services because it did not have sufficient ambulatory space. With the new facility, we anticipate reintroducing mobile school programs as well as bringing in specialty clinics. This means expanded services closer to home for Gray County residents. Next slide, please.
Right, there we go.
Along with providing more healthcare options closer to home. The new facility will also help to attract and retain professionals to the region. The new facility will house state-of-the-art technology. This is imperative as technology is a predominant component in medical equipment and therefore medical care. When the technology is better, it makes the workplace more attractive to best-trained professionals. When the dust settles, we expect that staffing numbers could very well increase. The building was designed with the ability to increase in size and bed numbers as population and demand increases. Next slide. Let's, let's, uh. Uh, you want the financial figures there, Darlene?
Yeah, it's come in my internet. I apologize. My internet is horrible here today.
Okay.
Yep, now?
No. It's not, not the right slide. There we go. Let's discuss the financial overview of our capital campaign. The figures on this slide are pretty self-explanatory. This is a sixty-eight to seventy million dollar project. And we have agreed to have available up to twelve and a half million for our share of the project. Of this, seven point eight has been collected from the first campaign to now. And as you've seen today, Gray County has generously donated and completed their, their pledge and fulfillment. To date of the million dollars of land and donation. Two million has been committed from the local municipalities as well, for a total of nine point eight million. This leaves a gap of two point seven million, which we are now campaigning to raise within our communities. Next slide. We would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your patience and your support with this project over the past couple decades. This has not been an easy road for any of us and we appreciate that your residents have felt the need. For a new hospital as much as anyone. We are pleased that this project is moving ahead at a very fast pace. And like I said, if you have any questions regarding this project, we encourage you to reach out to us and we will try and answer them. Uh, next slide, please. We have come today to you today to ask if you would consider increasing your original pledge by fifteen percent. This would mean an additional amount of a hundred and fifty thousand. This is equivalent to one percent per year, which may represent a small portion of the interest that would have been earned on your original pledge. This can be paid over a period of time, thirty thousand a year for the next five years or whatever is suitable to Gray County budget. Next slide, please. We are proud to be partnering with you on this project as we transform healthcare in Gray County for generations to come. We thank you for your time and consideration today. And that is the end of our presentation, so.
Well, thank you very much, Harvey. And I know that you have, uh, Bob and Darlene with you. Is there anything that, uh? Those two individuals wanted to add?
No, I think Harvey's covered it.
Yeah, Bob, if you wanted to say anything there, but, uh. I, I think we've, you know, we just wanted to bring this up to you guys and everyone, ladies that, uh. Um, we are in a campaign.
Excellent. Uh, so I'll turn things over to council. Is there any questions from? Anyone on council?
Council McQueen?
Council McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and, uh, thanks Harvey for doing the presentation along with Darlene doing her part as well. Harvey, are you able to explain a little bit? Um, and I know that originally. When the campaign went out, I guess about two thousand three or four, there was a, um. Uh, I think of twelve, over twelve million dollars had been committed. But that was back in two thousand and three and four, when the campaign kicked off in that one-year cycle. Uh, can you explain a little bit, uh, why or what happened over that time where? We do have that shortfall and maybe just, just briefly speak to that because, uh, obviously. There was a commitment, but then as the hospital took a lot longer than was first, uh, expected. The, the, then the commitment maybe changed. I don't know if you're able to speak to that at all.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty self. Uh, explanatory. The, the, the campaign back fifteen years ago. Uh, there were pledges of twelve to thirteen million dollars at that time. Uh, as we all know, the timeframe kept getting stretched out and stretched out and stretched out. And people became somewhat hesitant to continue with their pledges. So. A number of pledges were halted. Uh, in the mid-process. On top of that, there were pledges made by people that, uh, are no longer with us. Uh, and that were, that, uh, could not be honored, uh, due to, to deaths in the, in the, uh, different people that have pledged. So. Overall, um, we have approximately seven point eight. In the, in the count of, of money that has been collected. None of that money that has been collected, the capital, not a penny of it, has ever been spent. So that leaves us the shortfall of, of where we are today. And that's why we launched a campaign of five point seven. But that includes the county's pledge and commitment and all the local municipalities also in there. So the community campaign and that all, if all those pledges come through as planned. Will be approximately two point seven million because there's with the county. And the municipalities, that's approximately three million dollars. So, well, the shortfall is two point seven if all pledges come in from the municipalities. Hope that explains.
Thank you, Harvey. Uh, Deputy Warden, is? Anything else?
Just, just to follow. And, and thanks Harvey for the explanation. And, and the one good news is, is the commitment that, uh, the community. Uh, had to raise the twelve million never changed. So, so we're very fortunate that. That stayed that same level is, is the campaign that was fifteen plus years back. So again, um. We need to, we need to, to continue to follow up that shortfall. Um, one other thing, Harvey, I think you mentioned that our council that. Um, as time goes on, there's going to be draws happening with. You know, as, as you move forward with our hospital, uh, development, there's going to be certain draws on that commitment of, of. Twelve plus million. And I don't know if you want to speak to that or not, only from the part is that. Your, your, your full amount is going to start to de- depleted as you walk through this program or to the, through the.
Yeah, I can speak to that and it's already being depleted. Um. There has been approximately three million dollars sent to GBHS currently. Uh, we are committed to five hundred and eighty-seven five every quarter for the next two years. And then at the last, I believe it's two point eight million after the hospital is completed. So like I say, with the, the, the funding has started, the, the disbursements have already started to flow out at a. A fairly rapid pace. And, uh, like I said, we've made one of our installments currently, uh, the first installment of the, of the quarterly. So we have, uh. Seven more of those to go, I guess, would be the, where we are in the quarterly payments. So, yeah, the funding, uh, it, it, it. It, it's, it's flowing out quite rapidly, but, uh, that's why we're in the process of. Launching a, a campaign here very shortly.
So I just want to add that of that, um, three million dollars has already been paid to GBHS.
Yes.
Thank you, Darlene. Counselor Mill, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and, uh, good morning, uh, Harvey and, and Darlene. Um, thank you for, uh, your continued work on this. I, I think it's a, uh. It's a very important, uh, job you're doing. And I dare say, if you're like me, you had a little more hair when this all started. Uh, but, uh, I, I'm actually very supportive of, uh. Of extending, uh, more funding to this project as Harvey has, uh, has asked for. Uh, I know Southgate and other municipalities have had the same request and responded positively. Um, I'm just wondering, Madam Clerk, we have a committee. Um, I think it was dedicate, or it was one of its tasks was to discuss how. Um, healthcare funding could be, uh. Could be managed at, at the county level, uh, levels of funding and all the rest of it. I'm wondering, would it be appropriate to defer this? And not defer, but to refer this ask to that committee? Uh, or would it just be a matter of, uh, staff bringing a report back to council as a whole? How would, uh, how would you see that handled? Or maybe the, maybe Kim has a, has an answer for that.
I'm CAO.
Certainly. Um, I, I think that, uh, with councils, with councils' direction. Um, should someone wish to, uh, make a resolution to the effect that. That these funds be, um, included in the, in the two thousand and twenty-two budget for consideration. That's a way forward. We can certainly bring it back for further discussion, um, at the Healthcare Funding Initiatives table. I was, as we've talked about here before, thinking that our next meeting for that would be in September. Um, but again, would come back through the two thousand and twenty-two budget. So I think either one of those things could work.
Thank you. I would think, um, Madam CAO, that, uh, the committee might be the appropriate place because. There, there will be more than just this request. And I think the, um, the committee was trying to grapple with, uh.
A number of things.
Yes, right. So it might be appropriate that it go to that, uh, committee and then come back, um, with, uh, a recommendation in the budget, uh, process. And if we did that, Madam Clerk, uh, would we require a resolution to have the committee, uh, look at this and, and then make a recommendation? Uh, for budget?
That would be my recommendation that, um, the request from Centre Gray Hospital Foundation, um. Be referred to the, uh, Healthcare Funding Initiative Task Force for consideration in the two thousand and twenty-two budget.
So I will move what she just said.
I was going to say moved by. By Counselor Desai. Um, that it be referred to the committee and come back, uh, with the recommendation to budget. Uh, is there any discussion on that motion? I'll call the question then.
I do, sorry, Mr. Warden. I do see Counselor Soever's hand up, so I'm not sure if he. Wants to speak to the motion or just another comment or question.
Right. And Counselor Soever, I apologize for that. Go right ahead.
Yeah, well, I, I was just wondering, what is the status of the work of the committee? Um, it was quite some time ago that. We, we discussed, um, you know, and we compared the percentage of funding in Simcoe to, uh. To Gray County and noted they were, they were a lot higher in terms of what they were contributing, but. And then we, we formed the committee and, um, that was a long time ago. Um, so has the committee made any progress?
Um, Madam, uh, CAO, I'll turn things, uh, over to you. I, I guess the short answer is yes, and we have met, but.
Yes. Um, I think as, as we most recently discussed, um, the work of the funding committee was, um. Set aside while we went through the whole COVID situation, thinking that, um. There may be some new information and other considerations coming out of COVID and the things that. Our, um, healthcare providers have learned from that. Where we had left things was we still had two interviews to complete. And, um, those folks both know, one of whom is, is June Porter from your, uh, community. Um, those presenters are anticipating coming before the community, the committee in September. And, um, we'll add this to the agenda as well, but that was the status of things. We really, when we stopped being able to meet in person. Um, and knew that many of those, um, healthcare providers were very, um, tied up with responding to the, the COVID crisis. Um, we set this, this work aside for that time.
Thank you, Counselor Soever. Is there anyone else, Madam Clerk? And if that's the case, then I think it's time to call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion that's been presented? Seeing no one, I will say that that is carried. Thank you very much. And I will say thank you to Harvey, Bob and Darlene. Bob, you've been a, a quiet one. Strong silent type, I gather. Nevertheless, thank you so much for that update and, uh, I guess we'll be in touch.
Well, thank you for, uh, allowing us the time and your schedule to make this presentation. Um, it's, it's been great and, uh, a very positive. Uh, meeting. Thank you very, again, very much.
And thank you for the check presentation as well.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
So, oh. My internet seems to be going in and out. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Nod your head if you can hear me. Okay, good. Uh, we're on to item number four, looking at the consent, uh, agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled, uh, council? And if not, then we are going to go, uh, with. Uh, the consent agenda is being moved by Counselor Compass and seconded by Counselor Mackey. Is there anyone opposed to that? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to item number six A, scrolling down here.
Mr. Warden, I will note that Counselor Kivany is leaving her chair due to her earlier declaration of interest.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Uh, so we are dealing with item six A to Hilton Head Heights, uh. Hilton Head Heights condominium, uh, project. Uh, Stephanie Lacy Avon. Is on deck. It has been moved by Counselor Carlton and seconded by Counselor Patterson. Stephanie, you have the floor.
Okay. Mr. Warden and County Council, um, the presentation is visible by everyone? Perfect. Okay, so before us, we have the final report for Hilton Head Heights. Um, the alliteration that we all struggle with. It's a condominium located in Meaford at four oh eight Ridge Road. Here's an aerial image of the subject lands. The development will be situated on the north end of the site. So just up here. Um, while the remaining lands will continue to operate as the Meaford Golf Course. So it's currently. And continuing to be a two-nine hole course. The golf course has changed three fairways over the past six years to accommodate track rerouting for safety concerns. A golf spray analysis was completed for this project. There are residential detached dwellings and forested lands to the north up here. Residential detached dwellings and vacant lands to the east here. And residential detached dwellings to the south. And here, and this is the boundary of the settlement area. So to the west, there's agricultural lands. There will be new private road construction, which will be required to serve the proposed development from Ridge Road. So it will come off of. Here and enter the development. Servicing to the new condominium will be via full municipal water and sewer services. Here's the proposed draft plan. It's to create a total of thirty-three single detached slots. An additional eighteen units are intended to form part of the separate condominium application. So along here. Um, and that will be extending northwest along the private road. This is intended to be submitted for processing in a later point. Once the updated EIS is completed, which is anticipated this fall. So this will be a vacant land condo, meaning units do not need to be constructed at the time the condo is registered. Because vacant land condos cannot be phased, there will be two separate condo corporations following development completion. Sharing common elements such as the roadway, the easements. Several, several technical reports have been submitted with the application. Several, several technical reports have been submitted with the application posted on the website and were circulated to various agencies for review and comment, including Plan Justification Report, Environmental Impact Study, Stage One and Two Archaeological Assessment, Traffic Study Comment, Servicing Report, Stormwater Report, Plans and Drawings. The proposed development also required a zoning bylaw amendment to the local municipal zoning bylaw. A holding symbol was applied to all lots through this process, requiring execution of a development agreement prior to removal. Further, this will confirm the availability of servicing, servicing capacity prior to any phase proceeding. The Republic comments received, the virtual public meeting was held March fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. No members of public attended. Comments received in writing with respect to this application include concerns with errant golf walls, and the concerns regarding the loss of green space should the golf course be further developed, seeking future development plans of the entire golf course. Some of these matters were discussed at the municipal level. Because this, this land is currently privately owned, it isn't, it extends beyond the development. Provide further details of what their intentions and plans are of the golf course. So at this point, we can affirm that the golf course will remain, will remain as a two nine hole course. But it is within the settlement area and it will have access to full municipal services. So at, at a point in time, it could become further developed for residential purposes. There were concerns regarding potential environmental impacts. The quality and quantity of water entering Pete's Creek and erosion of slopes. Further review was conducted by Grace Savile Conservation Authority and they had extensive correspondence with the applicant's engineer. And so those issues were resolved. There are concerns regarding process for the subject file. In this case, there wasn't, there were two separate processes. And it is certainly the county's best practice and we, we aim to ensure best efforts that joint public meetings are held, just to avoid confusion. There were concerns with truck traffic, so the half loads versus full loads, as well as tree cutting. The subject lands don't have identified significant woodlands, so there will be limited tree cutting to accommodate this proposal. As well, traffic volume and speeding along Pearson Street and Ridge Road were identified as concerned, as well as provision of sidewalks. With respect to the agency comments received, Bell Canada, I was looking to ensure that through the development, there will be provision of communication, telecommunication infrastructure needed to service the development. East Link, there were no comments or concerns. End Bridge, no objections to the post-development easements to be provided to service the development at no cost. Grace Savile Conservation Authority, there were initial concerns with flooding and erosion hazards associated with Pete's Creek. Again, there was extensive correspondence and communication with the proponents engineer to resolve those issues. At this stage, Grace Savile Conservation Authority has issued a permit for installation of services and site alterations related to the entrance related to entrance of stormwater facilities and servicing. Hydro One, there are no comments or concerns. And the municipality of Miford passed associated zoning bylaw amendment. Municipal council supported the recommended conditions of draft approval on April twelfth. So an extensive and detailed analysis of provincial county and municipal policy has been completed. The proposed plan of condominium is within the primary settlement area of the town of Miford. Under Miford's official plan, these lands are also designated major recreation. Through that designation, there are residential development policies included under this major recreation designation for the subject site. Full municipal services will be extended to the subject development. An E I S was completed and G I C, G S C A has issued a permit for development and site alteration. Staffer of the opinion that the post-development has regard for matters of the provincial the Planning Act is consistent with the P P S, conforms to the County O P and conforms with the municipality of Miford O P. Staff are recommending at this time that the subject, subject report we receive, that all written and oral submissions received on the site plan of condo were considered and the fact of which helped to inform recommendations and decisions and that the Gray County Committee of the Whole approves the plan of condominium subject to the conditions set out in the notice of decision. That concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide any clarification where needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. I'll turn to Council now. I could see the full screen again. Excellent. Counselor Millen, do you have a question?
Yes, I did, Mr. Warden.
All right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, Stephanie. I, I can't help but think when I'm looking at the, the proposed development map or diagram or whatever you want to call it here, that the road and the development area seems to be rather randomly just kind of drove across the, the property. Waste of, waste of land kind of comes to mind. Is the intent for the golf course to work around this development or just up to it? Or, or how is that gonna, or is there challenges on the ground that it has to be this way? I mean, I, I'm not familiar with the ground, of course, but it just looks rather wasteful in terms of land use.
Here you, Mr. Warden. I can share my screen. There's additional mapping that may help provide just further context. There are significant hazard lands associated to the north of that where the proposed development is situated. So that is why and such that the, the lands have been delineated as, as such. So that no development is being proposed within the hazard land. So I agree at face value, it does look a bit strange without seeing that under layer of the hazard lands. But that's the reason as to why it's designed as such.
Okie dokie. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Millen, I don't see anyone else's hands. And if that's the case, then maybe it's time to call the question. So is there anyone opposed to the, to the motion presented? I see no hands and therefore I will say that that is carried. I guess we'll invite Counselor Kivany to come back to the meeting.
Yes, I've just notified her the vote and the discussion is now complete.
Okay. There she is. Welcome back, Counselor Kivany. We are moving on now to item six B, which is dealing with the Development Charges Appeal Appeal Hearing Process. It is moved by Counselor Mackey and seconded by Counselor Kivany. Our clerk and solicitor are going to be making this presentation.
I was unmuted. Okay. I'm going to start the presentation and then Mr. LaTerna will step in and and between the two of us will certainly answer any of Council's questions because it's a first. We have received our first appeal under the county's development charges bylaws. Since the bylaws were enacted in two thousand and seven, the Development Act requires council to hold a formal hearing into the complaint. And the hearing must be held under the rules provided in the Statutory Powers and Procedures Act. Section two of the county's procedural bylaw allows for council to hold a hearing under this act with the rest of the provisions of our procedural bylaw not being in effect. Since it's our first appeal on development charges, there's no established processes on how to handle an appeal of this kind with the county. And it is substantially different than a regular council or committee meeting. Staff are recommending a three-person ad hoc hearing committee be established for the purposes of hearing the appeal. Those members on the hearing committee would serve as a partial impartial adjudicators and judges of the complaint. It is also recommended that the warden be one of those three committee members and act as the chair of that committee. A three-person committee is very common in other tribunal settings. It is recommended that this committee be granted full power to hear the appeal and render a decision on the appeal. You will be familiar with the, the L P A, or the Local Planning Appeals Tribunal. This is very similar in format. It's also recommended that since the appeal is regarding a property in Georgian Bluffs, that our two council members representing Georgian Bluffs not be considered as a member on the hearing committee to avoid any perceptions regarding impartiality. The Development Charges Act contains some very tight timelines with the hearing required to be held within sixty days of receipt of the appeal. And I can confirm that I received the appeal as the clerk on May tenth. Legal services staff and my staff in my department will assist the committee, the hearing committee with the processes and the procedural matters related to the appeal hearing. Other county staff such as planning, finance, and our C A O will assist in other areas around the role of the county with respect to the appeal. Both of these streams will operate independently, independently of each other to avoid any illusion of conflict. It's our recommendation that the committee not be an ongoing committee, as it's unlikely, given the history to date, that many appeals will be received regarding development charges and the municipality subject to the appeal could change each time. However, if committee of the whole endorses the recommendation put forward by staff, this process will assist staff and council in the future, should we have another appeal. If the recommendations are supported, a head of council approval, clerks and legal staff will work with committee members to begin the preliminary processes required to establish a hearing committee. And establish the, the appeal hearing, including notifying the appellant. In the email that was sent out with the council package, it was requested any council members interested in putting their names forward or to let be know, I have received requests from Counselors Woodbury and Desai. They've indicated their wish to be considered for an appointment to this hearing committee. That is all I have, Mr. Warden, but between Mr. LaTerna and I, we would be happy to answer the questions.
Mr. LaTerna, is there anything that you wanted to add before I turn it over for questions?
Thank you, Warden. County Council, not at this time. Heather's done an excellent job of covering the, the basics.
Thank you. Perhaps I could start. I have just a really quick question. Mr. LaTerna, the, the S P P A, does it require that the decision be rendered in writing?
Yes, written decision is required and reasons, written reasons for decision, I believe, are on request.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Counselor Soever, I believe you may have your hand up. Now you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I keep forgetting I mute myself. Okay. Yes, my question is recently the province enacted the Ontario Land Tribunal Act. Now I believe there's a section of that act, I don't have it in front of me here, but there's a section which refers to the fact that its rules take precedence over the Statutory Powers Act. How, how are those? Yeah, okay, here it is. Despite section thirty-two of the Statutory Powers Procedures Act, this act, the regulations and rules prevail over any provisions of that act with which they conflict. So is there, are there some changes we should be aware of that are as a result of this new Ontario Land Tribunal Act being proclaimed?
Mr. Warden, if I may. That, it's a good question. The Ontario Land Tribunal Act reorganizes L P A and several other tribunals into a single tribunal body. That act is what we call the enabling legislation for that and it governs how the land tribunal will operate. The Statutory Powers Procedures Act is a default piece of legislation to fill in the gaps where a tribunal's enabling legislation doesn't give them rules. So in this case, the Development Charges Act requires the council hear the appeal and it doesn't provide any specific procedural rules for the tribunal. So the Statutory Powers Procedure Act continues to apply to council's role under the Development Charges Act. The language in the Ontario Land Tribunal Act dealing, overriding the S P P A only covers the tribunal's rules and each of the tribunals that it brought together have their own established rules. So really, it just allows those tribunal rules to be melded together into the single new unified body and leaves council in its tribunal capacity alone.
So follow up, Mr. Warden?
Of course, go ahead.
So in terms of if, if there were people that wanted to be presenters, parties, participants, all of that. Of course, there are no more presenters under the new Ontario Land Tribunal Act, but we, we would be governed by the, the Land Tribunal Act as far as the different categories of people who might be involved?
Mr. Warden, if I may, the, no, we would be governed by the provisions under the S P P A and the common law that's applicable to tribunals in that regard. So the only party that has status in the hearing under the Development Charges Act is the person, the appellant, the, the act calls the complainant, but it's the same essential idea. It's the person aggrieved. The tribunal would either have to, of its own motion, include persons as, as parties or with other status or would have to hear applications from anyone else who wanted to be involved. Any development charges complaint comes from a person required to pay a development charge. That's the, the trigger under the Development Charges Act. So they are by nature, under the Development Charges Act, quite specifically focused on typically a development, anything that would trigger the payment of the D C in the first place. So you're going to find that they're arising from a very narrow set of circumstances.
That, thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands, Madam Clerk.
I do not either, sir. I should just mention that as, as I did get to interested counselors, as per our practice, I would like to ask council if there is anyone else who is interested in sitting on this hearing committee.
Right, I believe we have Woodbury and Desai for now.
Correct.
Anyone else interested?
Is there a need, Mr. Warden, for any particular skills to sit on this committee?
I will turn to
I will turn to, to Michael, but you are acting as a tribunal, so just to hear the appeal and, and render a decision on that appeal.
I have full confidence in the two that have been, have been nominated.
I do see Counselor Robinson, Mr. Warden.
I believe Mr. LaTerna was about to say something.
Okay.
Only to say that to Counselor Millen's question here, Mr. Warden, that the the act empowers any municipal council. If a municipal council, upper tier, lower tier, single tier, enacts a development charges bylaw, that council serves by default as the, the hearing committee. So any this is, those are the persons who are considered to be able to provide, make the decision in this case. So if you could be elected to the council, you could sit on the tribunal. That's the position under the statute, basically.
And if I could follow that up, given the nature of, of this particular tribunal, what would be the standard of review?
That, Mr. Warden, is a good question. Standard of review, having undergone recent review under the Vavlov decision that came out a couple of years ago. It would go, the appeal, any appeal from the decision of council goes to L P A. So I think you would probably see them applying, or sorry, to O L T now. It would see them probably applying a reasonableness standard within their considerations. After that, probably reasonableness, but I couldn't say for sure without doing some research as to what a court would do with L P A's or O L T's determination.
Very good. Thank you. I believe Counselor Robinson had a question.
Yes, and thank you very much, Mr. Warden. So I do very much appreciate the, the detail written in the report and the, the presentation that we've just had. My question, is there merit in My question, is there merit in appointing an alternate to the hearing committee? Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
We will, because it's a three-person committee, it is going to be, I think, quite easy to bring those three together. We will work with both or all three of the council members to make that time available to them. So I'm not sure at this point that an alternate is required. Michael, do you have anything further?
Only that the S P P A is meant to facilitate expedient decisions that are to be made and its terms are meant to be applied flexibly so that you can get everybody to the table for the hearing to be held and a decision to be rendered. Because of that, there's a lot of flexibility in how the tribunal can operate. It's a little different. If you take the sort of polar opposite to it, you take a court proceeding where you have much more fixed rigid rules and timelines. And if you have to replace a judge, that can take weeks or months to reschedule a hearing if there's a conflict of interest, for example, that has arisen. So I think with the flexibility that the S P P A provides and the relatively small number of people who have notes on the proposed committee, I expect that this we would be able to proceed without an alternate and not have any major road bumps.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Warden, just before you go to the vote, I just want to confirm after there's no other questions that the mover and second are are fine with us, including Counsel Woodbury and Counsel Desai in the motion.
I wonder if they might each confirm?
Mr. Warden, it's Counsel Mackey. I certainly am content with the two individuals that put their name for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselors Woodbury. Now, let's start with Counsel Woodbury. Are you confirming your willingness?
Yes, I am.
And Counselor Desai?
Ah, yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is it time for me to call the question? I think yes. Okay. All right. So is there anyone opposed to the motion that's been presented? So to receive this report and the recommendations contained therein, including that Hicks, Woodbury, and Desai shall form the members of this tribunal. I see no one opposed, so I'm going to say that that is carried. Okay, we have one item left, and we've been sitting for just over an hour. What is your wish, counsel? We can take a short break and come back and finish, or if you prefer to press on, we can do that as well. I see more heads nodding for press on than I see for taking the break. All right. So we will move on then. So we're on item six C. Let me get back over here. And this is the community safety and well-being planning municipal agreement update. Barb Fede is on deck to present this. It's moved by Counselor Patterson and seconded by Counselor Mackey. Barb, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, counsel. I'm here just to give you an update on where we're at with our community safety and well-being planning that we're jointly working with our neighbors in Bruce County for. And today I'm looking for approval to receive the report that the new agreement between the County of Gray and the Corporation of the County of Bruce and the sixteen participating lower-tier municipalities be endorsed and that the warden and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. And further that I, as the director, would be reappointed as the County of Gray's representative at the Community Safety and Wellbeing Advisory Committee as well as at the Steering Committee. Okay, so just for a little bit of background, we've been at this now since twenty nineteen. Kim brought a report to counsel in twenty nineteen and we moved forward with it. And then I brought a report back eighteen months ago with the agreement at the time. And since that time, there's been some changes and that agreement was about forming the committee, moving community safety and well-being forward and addressing the legislative requirement that all municipalities in the province had to to augment this particular initiative. And so at the time, we decided that we would move ahead together. And we have since had quite a bit of work take place. We are, we were prepared to meet the original deadline, which was January first of twenty twenty-one, but it has been extended due to COVID. And so this has given us a little bit more time as well to meet the deadline of July first now with additional work that we have completed. And the new agreement then speaks to the second phase. The first agreement spoke to moving community safety and well-being, developing a plan and adopting the plan. And we're into the second phase, which is implementation. Part of that implementation was to develop an indicator report, gathering all the data points that we have. And I'm excited that we have a press release that will be launched, I think, by the end of this week or early next week to share the indicator report. It is attached to this doc, to this report, though. And it is something that we want to share out widely with our partners in municipalities as well as agencies and organizations, school boards. There are a lot, there's so much data that we have that we don't need to know the person to go and get it now. It's it's contained within the report. And it's a good starting place. If anyone's writing grants, if anyone's looking for information about who we are in this region of of Gray County and Bruce County. The information that we are looking for to share today, though, are the updates that have taken place since I last reported. And that was the approval of the plan and that it was presented as well. So we had completed a bit of a roadshow around to the municipalities. And we also attended since since the last report, the the public, the Board of Health meeting. We have presented at the Police Services Boards. And we have had a new coordinator, our last coordinator, previous coordinator that got us off the ground. Sarah Cowley has moved on to be the Executive Director at the Y for Gray and Bruce, and we have a new coordinator, Tanya Roberts. So there was some onboarding, recruitment, onboarding. We have assumed oversight of the Situation Table. Something new for you to know, we have had an ongoing, I would say, six to seven years now of a Situation Table, which addresses acute risk. It brings together partnerships, people that belong to organizations to have conversations that are non-identifying to ensure that that solutions are found before we have to go upstream and 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 move into something more drastic with someone. There's a lot of opportunity to engage and provide support before we get to a point where we must intervene with a police intervention. So at this table, the Community Safety and Wellbeing Table and the Situation Table were both initiatives under the Ministry of Solicitor General. And it made sense to bring onboard the Situation Table as an action table of community safety and well-being. So we petitioned the Advisory Committee, all seventy-two-plus organizations. We worked with the folks at the previous Situation Table to honor and respect the work they've done to carry this forward. We were a little bit concerned as to what could happen when leaders are retiring or moving on, and sometimes you lose the momentum and the strength of the partnerships. Having this embedded right within the community safety and well-being framework will ensure that it's sustainable and that it continues on when other people leave. And so we completed our round two of our engagement survey. We're currently reviewing the results. There weren't as many that responded, and I think it's a bit of COVID fatigue. Little bit of people are just tired. But we're garnering some good information and data out of that, and we'll be sharing that. And then we're working on an action table assessment tool. We know we have a lot of engagement tables here in Gray and Bruce. And we are going to be delegating some of the work that community safety and well-being identifies as priority risk to those tables. They're already there. They're working. They know each other. They're partners, and they can actually, they're waiting to be given some instruction and some supports as to how to manage and what to do next to be able to make an improvement on people's lives and and well-being. And then again, that indicator report I spoke to, and finally, the municipal agreement has been updated and shared amongst the sixteen municipalities involved in the two counties, and we're moving forward to meet the deadline for July first to have all of our required documentation forwarded to the Ministry of Solicitor General. Sir, any question or comments?
Counsel, I think Counsel Potter, you're first.
Thank you, Warden. I I don't see anything that tells me how the funding will be managed on an ongoing basis. It talks about what we have done. It doesn't tell me what. So are we going to continue to use our model where we bill everybody according to their share of the the county budget or Bruce's model where everybody pays the same amount?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for the question, counselor. That's a great question. We are really hoping and we're working with our parties to indicate to the ministry that as this is a mandated program, that there should be some funding that comes with it. We are, our funding right now does only take us through to the end of twenty twenty-one. And we, part of our upcoming agenda at the Advisory Committee is to work through some solutions to that funding question that you're asking. We're all asking the same question. So I hope to come back with some information, but I wanted to reassure you that we don't have a solution, but it is on our table for discussion.
Thank you. And secondly, we do have sort of regional situations, especially around our boundaries. Obviously, the boundary with Bruce doesn't matter very much, but some of the other, you know, moving beyond that. So, for example, for us, sizable part of our municipality which contributes a great amount to the county budget is represented by hospitals and healthcare and so on in in Collingwood and in Simcoe County. So we would want to make sure that they're represented in the decision-making progress process, and I know you're well aware of that. So I just wondered if if there's a provision being made for that.
Sure, through you, Mr. Warden. We are engaged with the situation, well, sorry, Situation Table, I'm getting my acronyms mixed up, with the Community Safety and Wellbeing Tables from all of the surrounding regions. So we have had a couple meetings, actually, with our folks, our neighbors over in Simcoe. We've also met with folks that are south of us in the Dufferin region. We are connecting with people in Huron. So there's definitely an intention for us to be able to ensure that we acknowledge that what's happening near those borders does involve agencies and organizations that are across the county lines. We have full intention of ensuring that we capture and work with those folks and they they have the same intent with us.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Potter. Counselor, so ever, you're next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I I'm really impressed by the amount of work that the plan has done so far, but this agreement, I think, you know, it it leaves a lot of questions and, you know, agreements should define roles and responsibilities and processes and not, you know, raise questions. So in particular, you know, the the roles of the various people like the coordinator, the the committee, they they aren't really well-defined or nor are the processes. For instance, at paragraph two, it says, the role of Bruce County and Gray County will be to facilitate the process for regional initiatives or strategies. Well, does that mean they decide or what, you know, facilitate is a pretty broad word? And then the next sentence says, the role of the Bruce municipalities and the Gray municipalities shall be to support any initiatives. So does that mean financial support? You know, or or, you know, are we? If the municipality lower tier signs this agreement as written, then they're committed to support when it's ever been proposed somehow. But how those regional initiatives or strategies are proposed and approved, it's not clear. Similarly, on the financing part, I believe there's a typo there. On the last line of paragraph three, it says, which additional funding to be reviewed? Let me, it should be with additional funding to be reviewed annually. But it doesn't say, you know, how budgets are presented and how they're approved, who approves them. You know, the the work would come from the committee and then would somehow go to the counties for approval. And then, you know, the the funding request would, the funding would be request would go to the lower tiers or or, you know, it's the processes are really unclear in terms of a a legal agreement. This raises more questions than it answers. So you know, I would, I would hope that, you know, it could be tightened up so that it actually does say, okay, this is the process. These, this is where the programs and initiatives are brought forward. This is who decides on them. This is where the budget requests are made, and this is the process for funding. Because that would, you know, clarify all the roles. Because right now, it's the, you know, the agreement doesn't say much, really. It's, you know, it talks about the funding that has happened. It talks about the initiatives. But, you know, when it talks about the municipalities, the role shall be to support. Does that mean just verbal support, financial support? It, you know, it's it's really unclear to me. So I would hope that, you know, it could be tightened up a little bit because agreements should solve problems and not create them.
Sure. Thank you for those comments through you, Mr. Warden. We know it's very vague and it is definitely, we're waiting for direction from the Ministry of Solicitor General. There, there is a good deal of information that we're waiting for for our outcomes. We don't have any of that yet. They delayed that, of course, to come in after they've received all of our plans. And so I hope to be back to you soon with the information. I'm not hearing of a further, a further reschedule. Although I do know some of our colleague municipalities, because of the ongoing work with COVID, have requested a further extension. That wasn't the intention locally. We are so connected that we thought it was so important to keep the work moving forward. But you're not wrong, counselor. There is definitely room for us to tighten that up with the with the duties and the roles. This gets us through to the end of the year, allows for the the implementation and the rest of the work we're doing right now to move forward. And then we would be looking at redefining and putting outcome measurements and further directions from the Ministry of Solicitor General right to be contained within the document.
Thank you, Counsel Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I just wanted to to say thank you to Barb and her group for the hard work and the volume of work. I can only imagine what it must be like to try to get eighteen elected bodies going in the same direction. It can't be easy. It isn't easy. And I do appreciate her efforts to see this this project through to completion and opera operations. So, thank you, Barb.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Mill. And I believe it's sixteen municipalities, right?
Sixteen and two counties.
Right, oh, right. That's right. So I, if I could ask a question around that, how does our indigenous communities play into the community safety and well-being regime?
Yes, thank you for the question, Mr. Warden. We have had opportunity to outreach. We have engagement with some board members who are board members of Mowickwadong as well. We continue to do at at the initiative level, at the at the action table level, those kinds of outreach. It's it's something that's on our work plan to do better, to do more. Some of the data was not easy to gather, and we know that our partners do have data that that will be very important and relevant. So it's definitely something that we're looking towards partnerships with our indigenous, our indigenous neighbors. The Mennonite population as well. There's a a number of populations in our, in our two counties that we know. We we could gather more information and then work towards some improved improved outcomes based on some of the risks that have been identified.
Thank you, Barb. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And Barb, I'd also like to thank you on behalf of our municipality for taking on this work. It's something that a small municipality, it would have been, I don't know how we would ever have been able to complete it. So collectively, you've done a wonderful job, and we certainly do appreciate that. Just wondering, the the composition, I think you had seventy-two members, which good luck to you in keeping, you know, that number actively involved. But with the changes to the Police Services Act, and we're going to be reducing the number of Police Services Boards, will the composition be changing in the future, recognizing that I think most Police Service Boards had a representative, representative on the had a representative on the the working groups? So will there be a reduction in the number of participants?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Counselor Mackey. That is a good question through you, Mr. Warden. We are currently working on that. I believe the deadline has either come and gone or is coming up for July 1st for responses from the police service boards to the request to have one, one member based on the area. And so having, having Inspector Krista Miller as part of our steering committee has been a real benefit to us because she's hopping us way through those waters as well. There's, there's a bit of a challenge. I'm not sure everybody in Bruce and Gray are in agreement with one member representation. And so I think we have to hold and wait to know what that outcome looks like. But you're right. Well, we definitely will have to revisit. What we may end up doing is circling back and having an action table of of police, police regions, sorry, the the police folks who who can represent the various areas. And then we can target some of our activities to be involved with those folks directly. Because each of our communities has slightly varied perceptions of what their risks are. Some of them, of course, homelessness and poverty and addictions and mental health, they're they're straight across the board. But there are some others like speeding. You know, certainly, there's, there's different, I don't need to take your time with those. But I think that there is an opportunity for us to be able to perhaps use the police as an action table, separate and apart from the Situation Table, which is another table that police and agencies sit at to work through individuals' crises in crises.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else, Madam Clerk.
No, sir.
Excellent. Then I think it's time to call the question. Is there anyone opposed to the motion that's presented? Seeing none, I'll say that that is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, we're on to item number seven, which is other business. Is there any other business?
I see Counselor Desai.
Counselor Desai, go ahead.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. So I'm sure CAO Windgrove is getting tired of this question right now. But there has been developments since the, since the last meeting in terms of the recovery. And I was just wondering if the CAO had a better idea at the end of this meeting as compared to the last one as to whether we will be able to get back into council chambers in some form or another, either in step one, two, or three, or if we'll have to wait further. And then just to provide some context, I have heard from from OGRA that they're hoping to plan the September meeting, well, not hoping, they're hoping to hold a September meeting in person in Toronto. And they've, to that extent, they've gone ahead and and booked hotel rooms for for board members. I'm just wondering if if there's the light at the end of this tunnel? Because I'm sure I'm not the only one for whom Zoom is getting a little tires. Thank you, Warden Hicks.
Um, CAO? You're muted.
There we are. I apologize. Thank you for the question, Counselor Desai. Yes, I think we're all very anxious to turn the page on this and and get back to meeting in person. My sense of things, based on both the provincial reopening plans and the direction that we're hearing from public health, et cetera, is that we should be looking at at phase three. So I think we are still in that August, September timeframe to be coming back to in-person meetings. So we want to make sure that we're aligned with the reopening from the province, that, you know, a full reopening is is on the table. We want to make sure that everybody's had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. I think those, just to ensure everyone's safety. So those are our key considerations, and we're looking forward to being able to reach that milestone and and bring everyone back. We will make sure that everyone gets lots of notice, though, about that so that you can plan your schedules in advance.
I'll just, thank you. Thank you for that response, CAO. I'll just say, if you called me the Wednesday evening and said we're having our meeting in person tomorrow, I will be there. I will, I will move, I will move the tennis around to make it happen. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. And I would also indicate, I think, that some of the lower tiers had indicated that they would be following the lead of the counties. So that'll be important that if we're moving in that direction, then I'll give some confidence to some of the lower tiers who've indicated that they will watch to see what the county does. And any other, sorry?
Counselor Millen, and then I, and then I think Kim has something else.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Ironic, given the last question that we haven't seen, Mr. Decide today. But anyway, that's just an aside. Counselor, to CAO Windgrove, I'm wondering, Kim, would it be appropriate? And I have an update on the the Black Pioneer Cemetery issue. I I I do appreciate your your transparency on that issue and and your efforts to keep counsel up to date. But I I know it's a sensitive issue, but is there any further updates on that that issue?
Thank you, Counselor Millen. After our last meeting, I indicated that we would be representatives of of this council. So the Warden and the Deputy Warden, myself and senior staff, met with members of the Cemetery Committee that following Tuesday, primarily to to listen to their perspective and their concerns. Coming out of that meeting, there was an agreement that the committee was going to consider things and think about what, how they felt a path moving forward could could be. And we have not had that follow-up discussion with them yet. I'm waiting to hear from them that they're ready to have another meeting. We are hoping to have some discussion and potentially looking at the at the property, perhaps on Friday with a couple of them. So I don't have any firm updates at this time, but certainly there are conversations ongoing. And I had indicated when we first met that we did need to bring something back to our meeting on June 24th. So you can expect a formal report of some kind at the next meeting.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your sensitive handling of this issue. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anyone else from counsel with other business? If not, then I'll turn it over to Madam CAO.
So further again to Counselor Desai's question about about reopening and in-person meetings. I think all councils are aware that tomorrow we start on phase one, which is the first step towards that reopening. And so our communications, economic and tourism staff have been working on some communications out to the public about that. And I wanted to give Katrina Perdian an opportunity to just let counsel have a sneak peek at the information that we're going to provide to the public. Katrina?
Good morning, everyone. I'll just very quickly share the poster that we have. And I will keep this short, as I I know that everybody's anxious to get going to lunch. So can everyone see that Rediscover Responsibly image?
Great. Yes.
So this is the county summer tourism messaging. It's called Rediscover Responsibly, and the goal of the campaign is just to ensure that residents and visitors to Gray County are coming back and rediscovering all of our spaces in a responsible way, which of course includes observing all COVID-19 safety protocols for the safety of our tourism industry, our visitors, our businesses, and our residents. We know that tourism is so valuable to this area, and we also know that responsible tourism is really key. It helps to minimize negative environmental, economic, and social impacts, and really just helps generate greater economic benefits for our local residents and the wellbeing of all of us here in the host communities. Encouraging respect between tourists and hosts is going to help us to build local pride and confidence. So this campaign is going to be run summer-long, primarily through social media and local print publications. We're going to be directing people to more information on the tourism website, visit gray.ca. We've also got smaller graphics that are going to be shared with all the economic development organizations and municipal partners in Gray County. And our tourism page has a resource page to assist businesses with encouraging responsible visitation from their customers and their visitors. I know we're all looking forward to safely welcoming people, you know, locals and visitors, back to our outdoor spaces and our businesses again. And we hope that this is just going to guide people to do that safely.
Thanks very much, Katrina.
Is that it, Madam CAO?
It is. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it for other business then. And item number eight, any notices of motion? Seeing none, well, move to adjourn. It is moved by Counselor Burley and seconded by Counselor Woodbury that we adjourn. Anyone opposed? None. Beautiful. Thank you very much, folks. Good meeting.
Good care.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
Take care, everyone. Even